Attention, I would like to call this regular Mount Vernon City School District Board Meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note that trustee Sabina Kelly will be joining tonight's meeting via video conference. Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Scott.
Present.
Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
VP Mitchell.
Present.
And President Maribel.
Present.
Okay. Student trustee Adora.
Present.
Okay. We have our quorum.
We will now have communication from the public, and I would like to read a statement to you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and their issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. However, if we are able to, we will. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research certain issues if we need to. We will, however, respond to your questions and your concerns at a future meeting if we do not address them in the meeting. Or we will have our proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I would also like to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels, and we will provide you with an organization chart. There is one available on the website, but I will ask that our board clerk make it available during our board meetings so that you will have that information readily available. Finally, we recognize that right now our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others may possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. Speakers may address the items that are on the agenda, or they may address other topics of concern. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly because I know that you will maintain respect and civility, the board may have to recess the meeting and return once order has been restored, but we don't anticipate any of that happening here in Mount Vernon. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you choose. We ask that you do that using our email accounts. They are all available on the board website, but again, I will ask that the clerk provide them in hard copy to members when they come to our meetings. The board will now entertain public comment for, I'm not sure how many people are here tonight, for about 30 minutes. Each individual speaker is allotted three minutes with an additional minute to wrap up. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to address and speak to the board are allowed to do so. I would also like to say to you that I know that this board wants to make sure that the public has all access to whatever the board is addressing. We are going to look at other means of streaming the board meetings. We are also going to look at other vehicles and ways to make sure that our communication is transparent, that it is full, it is comprehensive, and that you feel valued and that you feel heard. Thank you.
Our first speaker tonight is Micaebe Lucio. Mark Stuckey.
Before the clock starts, I'd like to give a moment of silence for two people, one who worked in the district here within our bus service, and one who was a member of the community who worked with our young people by the name of Marion Archer. And the one in the bus service was Heinz. A moment of silence for their loss and the loss of Ms. Marion.
Thank you. You know, it's, when we lose people, we should give honor because you don't know when it's your time. And as a person said a long time ago, how would you like to be remembered? And me, I would like to be remembered as a fighter for the city of Mount Vernon educational system. I stand here today, my name is Mark Stuckey. I am the whistleblower. To the new board members who was appointed this evening, I'm not here to fight with you. I'm going to give you 1,000% of my support because we have made a change. Now it's time to make it better, and I know that it's going to be better. To those who's been sitting here, you who believe in the system, who've been misled through the system, thank you for working to make that change. It's time to move forward, and I know we're going to have a better year. I stand here today because there's a way we can save money and build our fund balance. The whole thing is who is willing to listen. I walked through one of our plants today, one that was recently done over, Mandela. And I would like each and every one of you to walk through that plant. We have air conditioning units sitting on the roof that are not working the way they are supposed to be working because they're not even running. They're brand new. We need you to take a look. We have an air conditioning unit, I was informed today, that was for the main office, a new one that was installed on that roof. My question was, it's five years old. The people who came to make the change, why they're saying it's not working, okay, was it filler freon? Did you do the necessary checks on this unit to make sure, you know, what can be, if it can be repaired before you rip it out, but do it honestly? A lot of things has not taken place in this district, right now it's not being honestly I see that we made a change and abolished, I believe that it was said, on our grounds crew. How can you wind up abolishing something when it seems like to me, I can be wrong, but you put something in place ahead of time for one to make money off of it? Now, look at that contract. Are we spending money to have someone come in? Because I understand it's a lot sum of money, itemized, okay? Look at that contract. How many people bid it on the contract? And C, does it outweigh our staff? Which I say it does not because our grounds crew moved furniture, moved boxes. Who's going to do that? This was all put into place to destroy our system. Right now, you need to stand back, look at the picture of the corruption that was done to hurt us. And I said corruption. It's all about making money, the way I'm seeing it. Take a look, evaluate, I'll give you the resource, the tool, the information, or whatever, but do your homework. The employees in this district is not here to hurt you, to do anything wrong. We are here to help you, to build. If we wind up doing some things a certain way, we could build a fund balance before you know it. Mr. Superintendent, I don't know what you may have heard about me, and I'm putting it on the table, okay? Some may be true, some may not. I'm not here to knock or destroy your seat. I am here to help you. Listen to what I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey, for your comments. Thank you. Lawrence Hughes.
My name is Lawrence Hughes. I am a city worker for the Mount Vernon City School District. As of today, I am a former groundsman. I was recently reassigned back into the building due to budget costs or, or as it was phrased at the last board meeting because we couldn't do the work. That statement was truly not, was simply not true. The ground department has been understaffed for years, whereas once a team of 13 to 14 people reduced to seven. Despite that, we have continued to complete our responsibilities, even take on tasks outside of our job title. That includes handling district-wide moves, all departments within the school department, transporting materials across the district, making deliveries, and covering the pony delivery route when the measure is unavailable. Now, the district has hired an outside company to take over landscaping and grounds work for the '25 to '26 school year, work that we faithfully done for years without help. We never had help cutting these schools and during these moves. To make matters worse, there are rumors that they're going to reduce our salaries even though we've been working for this long. They're taking, they're going to abolish our positions, and we don't know what's going on with our future because they barely say anything to us except send an email. We giving years of hard work, dedication, and pride to the district, our blood, sweat, and tears, and now without any discussion of respect, we're being cast away, and that's not right, and we deserve better. That's all I needed to say, that's all I wanted to say. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Hughes, I just want to say thank you for the service that you've given to date. Thank you for your comments as well.
Brenda L. Crump.
I got this thing so high. No, I'm not that tall. Thank you. And you know I have to speak into the mic as often as I say, please speak into the mic. Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to discuss and ask a question about the special board meeting that was held on June 23rd, Resolution 9.1, which it reads, "Be it resolved that this Board of Education approves the portrait of Cecil H. Parker be moved to the Board of Education at the district office from Cecil H. Parker School." The Cecil H. Parker School is one of the school buildings that will be closed effective July 1st, 2025. Motion by Lauren Kirwin, second by Adrian G. Saunders, final resolution, motion carries. Yea, Adrian G. Saunders, Sabina Kelly, Lorna Kirwin, Wanda White, Helene Jenga. Nay, Lynn Middleton, Warren Mitchell, abstain, Donna Maribel, Chris McDonough. My questions are, did that resolution have to be voted on, on the 23rd? Could that resolution have not waited for some more board discussion before the public? And I would like for each trustee that voted upon that resolution to please explain your decision, your vote, to your constituents as to why, because Ms. Cynthia Crenshaw, what's her name, Crenshaw, Cynthia, I'm sorry, Noah Cershaw, Cynthia Crenshaw, all the Cynthias, where's she, Turncrash Jones? Okay, so Cynthia Crenshaw, a resident came up and she spoke to the board in regards to the Parker family, a letter that she had from the Parker family expressing their gratitude, et cetera, but their wish, they asked that the donation that they made to Parker School, which I understand, I know that it's the property of the board because Parker School belongs to the board, so therefore any donation belongs to the school district. But the family asked if the board would donate it, loan it, present it, put it up at the library so that more of constituents within the city and abroad and patrons would be able to see it, and a whole write-up and dialogue and information can be put along with the portrait. I want to give some crudos to President Hope Maribel because she's very good with stuff like that, so I'm sure she would have done something really nice. But my question is, so will each of you please explain to your constituents why you made the decision that you did about moving the portrait from Parker to the Board of Education? Trustee Middleton asked a question about why is the portrait being moved from Parker to the Board of Education? And she was totally dismissed, disregarded, and ignored by her board colleagues. I, as your constituent, am asking the question. Please explain your position on the vote to move the portrait of Cecil H. Parker, Ms. Parker, from the Parker School to the Board of Education versus the library. And I want to also say this to you, board members. Being on that side, being in the back room, please do not hide behind executive session. Because a lot of things, I'm not back there now, but I've been there before, and sometimes things take place, discussions take place that's not executive session. And so although you might have wanted to talk to the lawyers about the possession, whose portrait is it? The discussion as to where it goes, that was not executive session. That should have took place before the public, before your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. I do want to answer a couple of the questions that you did ask. Number one, you asked whether or not some trustees could respond in terms of why. As you are aware, some of those trustees are no longer on the board, so you would have to contact them directly in terms of asking them what they thought and what their thoughts were. And I do believe that it is the property of the city school district, that particular portrait, and I believe that there is an opportunity to have further discussion about it. So thank you.
Oh, next.
My question was for each trustee that voted, please explain to their constituent their vote, why they voted the way they did. That was my question.
Thank you. Trustee White would like to, trustee White would like to make a comment.
Thank you, trustee White.
I feel my reason for voting for it to be in the Board of Education because she was the first black teacher, and this is the educational center. So I think if we can find a very nice place to hang it, where everyone can see it, with a little light above it, and a name tag, until we find a permanent place for it, that's why I voted for it to be sent to the Mount Vernon Board of Education. Because she was our first black teacher.
I can explain the reason why I voted against or abstained is because there's never enough babies in this building at one time to be able to appreciate that portrait or know who she was. I felt that the library would have been a better place, and that shouldn't be the end of it. I think that we should also have that portrait on the district site as part of our historical corner, which is something we should be adding. I think we can add to the district site at some point. We have a lot of different historical figures in Mount Vernon who are extremely important as far as, you know, Cecil Parker, Dr. Zollakoffer. We have many, many rich parts of our history educational-wise that we should not put them, I wouldn't put them here, me personally, because my babies will never come in here for anything. Only people come in here and pay taxes or come to the board meetings. The rest of the kids don't know anything, they'll never see those, that picture again because until they're old enough to walk in here, you know? So that was the reason why I voted the way I voted.
I'll share why I abstained. I abstained because number one, we know that the building is closing. We don't know, we don't know whether or not, what's going to happen with that building. We wanted to protect and secure that property because it is ours. If we release that property to someone else, then we lose ownership, we lose the recognition that she received when she earned it, and I do believe that we do have an opportunity to reconsider where it is that we put it.
Lynn, I'm sorry, go ahead. You go first. I'll back clean up.
I want to say good evening, everybody. There's history behind that portrait, and if you weren't there, then you don't really know. I was there. And, you know, given the fact that Ms. Parker was one of the first black teachers around, I think that the public deserves, and even our young people who visit the library, deserves to see what, you know, the real history is behind who she really was and what she really meant to this community and to the Parker School being named after her in about 1983, if I'm correct. Because I was there when it was Nathan Hale changed to Parker School, Mary Spels became the principal. So there's a whole lot behind that that if you don't really know, then you probably don't really mind it being here. I don't know how many people are going to come in and see it. But, you know, I abstained because it definitely deserves to be in the eye of the public. It's history, and it's rich history. It's our history, and our people and our young people need to know the history behind who Ms. Parker really was.
Hi, I don't want to be redundant. I shared a lot of the concerns other trustees mentioned. I abstained. I agree, I didn't think it needed to be brought up that night. I thought we had time. Certainly, I'm concerned about it remaining in a building. If the building is going to be closed, will it degrade? Will it not be cared for? But I didn't think we needed to make that decision on the 23rd. Certainly, I agree, it didn't need to be discussed in executive session, and it was on an executive session agenda. My colleagues will tell you, I am a stickler, I am a radical transparentist, I want as much public facing as possible, and I brought that up, saying, why is this being discussed in executive session? It had no business being discussed there. So I'm with you on that. Basically, I didn't have enough information at that time. The library was brought up, it seemed like a reasonable idea. I think we have time to sort of work through that, and we have a whole new group of trustees coming in a week from the 23rd of June. It seemed reasonable to wait and take our time a little bit, talk about it in public, and get the community sense. So that's why I abstained.
Thank you. And also, we do have, we may have a potential conflict of interest, so we just want to make sure that we do it the right way. Thank you.
Kenya Miller.
Thank you, trustee.
Good evening, everyone. First, congratulations to the newly seated board members as well as the leaders here and the new superintendent. This is an important moment for Mount Vernon, certainly. My name is Kenya Miller. I am the founder and executive director of Intelectus Preparatory Charter School. So first and foremost, I thought it was important for me to show my face and to ensure that I am once again presenting an opportunity for collaboration and for partnership to this new board collectively. The reason why I requested to speak tonight is because we had turned in a letter of interest for a particular property that is one of the buildings that are being closed and was told that the former board was not willing to make any decisions or have any discussions about it at that time, and therefore we needed to wait until the transition happened. I actually have a newborn at home, so I'll be rushing to get back to her just in a few minutes, but I wanted to make sure that I came here to present some of those thinkings and thoughts directly to the board here. One of the main concerns that I continue to hear over and over again is in regards to charter school funding and charter schools drawing money from the school district in totality. And while we can debate and have a lot of conversations about how to trace funding and where that funding truly comes from and how it impacts everything overall, we do know that the state has a sloppy way of doing things. It's just a part of the work and a part of what we experience. But the ultimate goal here is to go ahead and fund some of that money back into our public dollars. Right now, we are a public school giving money to a private landlord. We pay city taxes, we pay school district taxes, and we have never complained or made any noise about that, which just is a testament to our willingness to continue to work together and to support the district. We're not here in competition for, against, rather, Mount Vernon City School District. What we do is we offer something that's not offered elsewhere, and I'm happy to talk offline or directly to any one of the school district members about the uniqueness of our programming. But I believe that public dollars should stay public dollars for as long as they possibly can, and that's my stance on it. I am going to be resubmitting that LOI or have our real estate team resubmit the LOI, and I will be getting the email addresses and all the contact information from Clerk Rita James. And ultimately, the goal here is to ensure, I have an additional minute? Okay, thank you. Is to ensure that we are also protecting the assets of the school district. I understand that selling might be something that is a very quick way to get money and to start closing some of those funding gaps, but to have a longstanding tenant where there's rental increases, the same things that we would be giving someone private, we could be giving right back to the school district. And I think that it makes sense, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. There are other school districts in other places that have very similar demographics to ours that have figured this out, have done this, and have done it successfully for years. And I think this is a great opportunity for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I do want to direct you and let you know that due to, that is one of the restrictions of, under open public meeting law, that we do not discuss those items, so I just wanted to let you know that's why we will not comment. Thank you.
Thank you, and that ends public comment for this evening.
I hope everyone is doing well. First and foremost, I just want to thank this board, the community stakeholders for your extremely warm welcome. I'm excited to begin my tenure into the district. Just to give you a little preview of how I will generally provide my information to the public, I will always have a presentation at our monthly board meetings, and that will actually recap all of the things that have happened that are noteworthy for that month. It will be projected on the screens, and it will be a way to continuously celebrate the good news. I want to thank all of those individuals that have come out to my Let's Talk sessions. They have been well attended, also streamed on Facebook. I've been able to actually engage the public in, with their questions that have been posed on Facebook as well, and I have no problem doing so. And I'm looking forward to the next Let's Talk segment at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts on July 12th from 11:30 to 1:30. I will also be presenting the stakeholders of the district and the community. I will also be presenting the stakeholders of the district and the community with weekly spotlights, a small, quick blurb, something that we need to highlight or focus within the district, a monthly family newsletter. I want to also take the time and thank those individuals that had completed the survey that I put out there about the district culture and climate. Over 1,400 individuals responded, with 100 stakeholders actually completing that survey. And I got to give a shout out to the babies, AKA the children or students, because they actually had the highest number of responses. So I'm very, very pleased that I'm going to be able to use those data and actually begin my strategic planning process. And finally, I'm just looking forward to meeting with members of the community, being out there in the streets, as I like to say. Please give me a little time. I just literally started, stopped my last job last night at about 8:30 PM, and then drove right to Mount Vernon, got here at 3:00 AM, and started brightening early this morning. But definitely excited to serve the community. I listen to everything that people are saying, and I definitely will ensure that we are in a space where we do some sort of follow-up. Do know that agreement or, you know, it doesn't necessarily equate to we can fix it or what have you, but do know that I will always listen. I will always listen and look for a resolve in some way, shape, or form. So with that being said, this is my last, like, regular comments or what have you. I will normally be talking to you via the PowerPoint presentation. So thank you.
We do not have any committee reports tonight, as we will be appointing new committee chairs, and we will be appointing new committee members. So we do not have any committee reports tonight. Thank you.
So great evening again, board trustees. Just in FYI, I was a part of this, I was a part of the tab review for this board meeting. So, but I was still also a part of another school district, also needing to close out my last school board meeting, which was last Thursday. So please do understand that there will be some amendments that are actually made from the floor. I will, once we get to those actual tabs, I will ask members of my cabinet to actually interject to tell you what those amendments are. And by this way, we keep the business of the school district moving so that we don't have to halt and then, you know, put forth resolutions at a later time. So I thank you for your patience, and normally, this would not be one of those situations that would happen. But for tonight, I just need to be very clear that this needs to happen tonight. Thank you.
So we're going to jump onto our resolutions. Can I have a motion, please, for 5.1, Human Resources 129A, certified?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Aye.
My question is, did I miss something or was there backup? Because remember, you said to refresh too, right? I did refresh, and I didn't see it for the certified, so just wondering if I missed it. It's there? Oh, because it didn't come up on my computer. I don't know. But anyway, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources 130B, classified.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns?
Can you refresh my memory? Did we get a count as to how many nurses we're going to have? Looks like it's seven. Is that correct? I don't recall getting a response on that question.
At this time, I don't have an answer to that question, but what I'll be sure to do is actually find out and share with the entire board.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 5.3, request for a leave of absence?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.1, approval for merge athletics activities with Tuckahoe High School for 2025-2026.
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.2, authorization to hire staff for the Summer Smart Scholars Program at Denzel Washington School of the Arts and Mount Vernon High School from July 7th through the 31st, 2025. We have a motion?
There's an amendment on the floor. For this resolution, it should read at the bottom, "Any district nurse can serve as a substitute nurse for the program."
Thank you, Dr. Dogger, for that amendment.
All in favor?
We have to vote on the amendment first?
Any oppose? I'm going to withdraw the first. Oh, you, okay.
Can I have a motion to amend?
6.2.
Motion.
Yes, and your second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries for the amendment. So can I have a motion, please? 6.2, as amended, authorization to hire staff for the Summer Smart Scholars Program at Denzel Washington School of the Arts and Mount Vernon High School from July 7th to the 31st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion, please, for 6.3, authorization to accept the Teacher Center of Central Westchester NYSCD grant for the 25-26 school year. Can I?
Motion.
And for second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.4, authorization to hire staff for the Summer Lehman Scholars Learning United with Success Plus program for Mount Vernon STEAM Academy students at Denzel Washington School of the Arts, July 7th to 31st, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 6.5, authorization to hire high school scheduling teams to update and finalize the master schedule for the 25-26 school year.
Motion.
There's an amendment on the floor. On this amendment for STEAM, we would like to take the teacher off Ms. Anna Rodriguez and replace that with the principal, Dr. Christopher Pierce. The reason is that there were two different lists submitted, one without his name. And as you can see, he's the only principal missing from the resolution. No. He's the administrator. There's three staff members per school. Anna Rodriguez, the teacher.
Just from my understanding, there's supposed to be three administrators from each of the buildings?
Three staff members per school. If you look at one of them, there's four, because the counselors are splitting the position.
Okay. Was there any rhyme and reason to why it was principals sometime or counselors at the time? Just from my understanding.
It's whoever's on the schedule team that the principal sees fit.
So we can have a principal see themselves fit?
They're part of the scheduling. They're responsible for scheduling. They have to oversee it. So it's usually principals, assistant principals, and counselors. That's the norm.
Okay, I get it. I get it. Thank you.
So can I have a motion to amend 6.5, authorization to hire high school scheduling teams to update and finalize the master schedule for the 25-26 school year?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Oppose.
Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 7.1, Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 1, dated July 1st, 2025.
Motion.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 7.2, Approval to Award the Winners of RFP Number 24/25-5, Special Education and Related Services.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion, please, for 8.1, Authorization to Complete Budget Transfers for the 25-26 fiscal year.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second and question.
Questions, concerns?
I'm sorry, was there ever a split of what the transfers were submitted? I know that the explanation was given by Mr. Raimandi that is a routine, but was there anything ever shared that we could look at so that we can see the splits and how the money's being moved to and from?
So the transfers haven't taken place yet. They'll be taking place over the month of July and completed before our audit in August. So this is so we can close out our books and reconcile so that we don't have zero balances.
So this is the green light so that we can begin to create those transfers? And those transfers, we will vote on and see the backup then?
No, we're going to vote on it now that we can now go in and create those transfers, because there could be 100 or so.
Dr. Strickland, can you please explain? Because I'm very uncomfortable with just doing a blanket approval.
So this is actually very typical for a school district to do a blanket approval, and then what we can actually do is come back and we show the lines that needed to be transferred to. So, you know, this is so that we can, once again, keep the work of the district going. But then, we would do our due diligence to, we have to, come back and make sure you know exactly what it is that has happened. And this will also help us to understand what actually can go back into, hopefully, a fund balance or if we have to, you know, if we have to actually do something else, like, or that would require board action.
Our July 15th meeting is a working session. As opposed to it being a working session, can we ask that those numbers be presented to us so that we don't have to blindly approve these transfers?
I'm not sure if we'll be complete by then, but whatever is completed, we can share.
Don't we have a meeting in August?
We have two meetings in August, and we have a meeting in July as well.
You're going to have this prep in order for the outside audit that's going to be engaged in August. So maybe if we wait until the meeting in August, would that be okay if we do it then?
When is the audit in August?
Middle of August, around the 15th, I believe.
And when is our board meeting? I believe it's a, is it a working session or is it a board meeting? I believe it's a working session, right? So can we change that meeting to an actual meeting so we can vote? In that way, we will know what those numbers look like?
So absolutely, President Marbo. One of the things I want to be clear, I want to keep our work sessions because we really do need to talk about the academics. But one of the things that I want or that we could do, that I could propose, we have a quick special meeting after, and then that's when Mr. Raimandi can present those budget transfers to you all, and it'll be within the timeframe so that you're comfortable in seeing what happens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That sounds like a, that sounds like a compromise.
Madam President, my fellow, is it okay if I call you Madam President? I don't know if that's being rude or not. I don't know. It looks like we have a meeting, a regular board meeting, on July 29th. So would that give you enough time? Because that's the very end of the month. So if you can have it done by July 29th, then we don't have to change anything.
I would just rather commit to the work session just to ensure that I have the time to also go over those items with Mr. Raimandi and the executive cabinet to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, if you will. Thank you.
We're voting it now, and then...
So if you agree, so just for clarity, because for our new board trustees who are just trying to get acclimated, if you agree to authorize this resolution, then you would vote yes. If you are satisfied with Dr. Strickland's proposal, then you would vote no.
All in favor?
So the motion is to authorize to complete budget transfers. If you agree with that, then your answer, then your response would be yes. If you don't agree and you are satisfied with Dr. Strickland waiting for a special meeting to do it, then your answer for this resolution would be no.
Don't we have to authorize the transfers?
Yes.
First?
Transfer in order to start this process?
To start the process.
Then, once the process is started, then at our meeting, then we'll be able to go forward.
That's correct. We're making a commitment to bring those transfers back to you. However, we do need board authorization to actually move forward.
So again, this resolution says that you authorize to complete the budget transfers, meaning that they have carte blanche to actually do the budget transfers, make the budget transfers happen if you vote yes on this resolution. If you vote no, then they have to present the information, provide documentation in the executive content or even in the public content, and then we would approve it. But if you vote yes on this, that means you're authorizing them to do whatever they need to do, and then they just come back and provide you with the paperwork. to do and then they just come back and provide you with the paperwork.
Correct.
Correct.
After the fact.
After the fact. But if you vote no, then they have to, they can present you with the paperwork and then you would approve it after they have shown you what it is that they're planning to do.
But then they won't be able to do the transfers without our?
That is correct.
So, but they need to do the transfer by August 15th for the audit.
And that is why we asked for the July 15th, if they could present some of the items that they had. We also asked for July 29th. And there's the, uh, I guess the audit is the middle of August. So if you have to actually do it and you have the information, you can present it to us in July and you will be prepared for August. But to ask us to do it after the fact, I believe that's part of the discussion in the question, but to ask us to do it after you've already done it is basically saying, okay, ratifying what you've already done.
I think we would feel comfortable with the backup before we give you the rubber stamp on doing the transfer. And how long do you think you need to provide us the documentation?
I mean, we're looking at it possibly hundreds of transfers. This is so we don't have negative codes when we want our appropriations reports. I mean, I can't say at this point in time. We have to, we just finished closing, we're in the process of closing out our books, rolled over our new budget, so we haven't even begun that process yet. We would, this would take place first so that now the business office can now reconcile all those negative balances or everything so we can have um, a clean sheet moving forward and prepare for our audit, for the auditor's report that they'll present to you in the fall.
And so is it, I'm, I'm a new trustee, so is it customary that this is done at this end of the, close of the school year? Or is it done like as soon as school is out and then you start this?
This is um, standard operating procedure for every rework meeting.
So this is the SOP going, this out?
Correct.
Um, just make, for clarification, it is standard operating procedure for us to close out all the accounts, remove all the variances. However, there's usually documentation that shows us what it is you're moving. So my question to you, again, is even if you present them to us in different forms, if, if there's 51, one meeting, 50 another meeting, I mean, you have to do the work anyway. You still have to do the work, correct?
That, that's no problem, President Marbo. We'll, we'll definitely, whatever the will of the board is, we'll definitely make sure that we get the information uh, the way exac, I, I get what, the essence of what you're trying to say. I will, I just want you all to know, this is no different than a lot of other school districts though, okay? But I committed to making sure that you see those hundreds of lines possibly.
Thank you. Call for the question.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Oppose.
So trustee Brown, oppose?
Oppose.
Trustee Peterson, oppose? Trustee Scott? Trustee McDonough?
Uh, I, I vote yes.
Okay. Trustee Maribel? Trustee Mitchell?
Oppose.
Trustee Middleton? Trustee White?
Yes.
And, and trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, this, this motion fails. Have a motion, please, for 8.2. Approved the internal claims orders report dated May 2025. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.3. Approved the treasurer's report dated May 2025. Motion? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.4. Approved the settlement of tax proceedings for 60 West Broad Street? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.5. Approval of the extension of services from first student transportation for summer field Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.6. Approval to extend agreement with Bruce Singer as financial consultant. Can I have a second? Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a, I have a question. I'm just trying to get clarity. We have.
In the mic.
Oh, I didn't know I wasn't close enough. Um, I have a question. So the difference between this, the work that this consultant is going to do and capital market advisors is what?
So this is a consultant that we've had work with, the former business administrator. They work on the day-to-day operations, providing additional oversight and consulting resources. Whereas capital markets, we would appoint as a financial advisor on behalf of the entire district, which we also would use at their discretion. And so they provide a range of services from uh, looking at short and long-term bar, borrowing, so I'm trying not to use my accent. It's getting me tripped up. Short and long-term borrowing, here we go. Uh, our ability to close out our books better, uh, working with our fiscal monitor, uh, our long-range financial plan. So it's a much more global view than uh, the consultant for the business office that just works with the business office.
So granular versus top-down?
Exactly.
And how would this impact the state monitor that's coming in that's also going to be involved in our finances?
Uh, I, I wouldn't know the answer.
So, so basically, uh, they will be doing something similar but from the state lens. So they would be thinking about best practices, making recommendations on how we could actually sustain money, and then putting those recommendations forward to the state monitor, who then reports that to the commissioner of education. So very different. Uh, it is a group effort, um, but nonetheless, all working in tandem to really try to get the district back in a great financial state. You're welcome.
I do have a couple of questions. The contract that's, that's listed here is an old one. It's not current. So where's the new contract? And number two, is this financial consultant required for any, anyone to be able to operate in their job?
So the, the way it reads, it actually should read, and I'm seeing it up on the board, that this is a, to extend the services until an RFP is awarded by the board. I don't know why it's not written like that. So that would be an amendment on the floor.
It's on here.
Is it there?
Yeah.
Is it?
This vote approves extender agreement with Bruce Singer as a financial?
Okay, I see in the small print. Okay.
So my question again, are we anticipating keeping this contract the way it is? Is there an anticipation to change it in an RFP? What is, what is the plan here?
The anticipation is to publish a new RFP.
With the same parameters?
It will be tailored more towards the monitor coming in to the district. So this is to support the district with the monitor. Because the monitor's going to ask for a lot more financial information, so we want to make sure that whatever RFP we publish, it speaks to that so that the district is, is prepared to answer and provide all information requested.
So just quickly, um, I do know that you're probably looking for a timeline on the RFP. What I'll do is, uh, every Friday you will, or excuse me, every week, I don't want to say Friday to stick to a date, you will get a confidential letter. I will work with Mr. Raimandi to make sure that you understand when the, when the RFPs are being put forth.
I, I would also like to comment that the RFP is already in works with legal. I started that last week. It's just we want to make sure we have that content, we didn't get it out, because it does take time to develop and award an RFP.
So we anticipate this may be lasting for just a few months?
I would say less than that. Well, all right, let's say a few months. It's, as soon as the RFP is ready to go and it's published and it's awarded, so we want, I want to move quickly. I don't want things to lag.
Okay. Does this suggest until a new RFP can be drafted?
And awarded by the board.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion. Approval to extend agreement with MJB Communications for the new school year.
Me.
Question, is this the same story?
Different story.
Questions, concerns?
Sorry.
Please share.
This is just an extension of the agreement that the district has with MJB Communications for uh, next year.
So we are not anticipating a new RFP for this? And if we're not, why not?
The original agreement, it doesn't conclude. It, this can be renewed at the discretion of the board. So that's the motion on the floor, is to renew the existing agreement uh, by the board.
With the same parameters?
Yes.
All in favor?
Can I have a question?
Aye.
I have a question. So when we approve this?
Turn your mic on.
Mic on.
Can you hear me? Good, good, good. So when we approve this, that means we will be able to see a new agreement with current dates?
Yes. Well, there should be an agreement in exec content, the contract.
It's old.
No, it's old.
Yeah, it's old with the old dates.
And so was the last one as well.
Okay, so we can, we can update those dates in, in line with our new school calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.8. Authorization to appoint capital market advisors LLC as fiscal advisors during the 25-26 fiscal year. Questions, concerns?
Should there, should there be a, an attachment here? Like the original contract, is it an extension? Is it like, or is it authorization to continue working with capital markets?
So there's no contract. This is just an agreement that the district's entering to utilize them as our financial advisor.
Dollars and cents?
So there's a fee structure. Uh, I reached out, there should be a fee structure in place that I did upload. Do you see it there?
No, it's not in, it's not in exec content. I don't see it.
Yeah, so there's, there's a cap on, and it's in, on an as-needed basis.
Where even, where's that at?
It's in, it's in the resolution. If you read down the bottom of the.
8.8, no, yeah, not 8.8.
This is capital market. There's no dollars on it. It just, it just says for the 25-26 fiscal school year, but it doesn't have the cap. It doesn't show it. I'm just looking for something in documentation that says what dollars are involved. Can that be added to this?
Yes, it can be added.
Thank you.
So there is no fee for this?
I know, there's a fee. I believe I did send it to, to Rita. I'll have to look back, but I'm pretty sure I sent it out.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't see it.
So do you know what the fee is?
There's a variety of services they provide for different fee structures.
Okay, is this for um, staff members or is this for the district to use?
This is for the district. So capital markets did our long-range financial plan. They did our studies. This is at district level.
For them to continue to do that?
If I'm not mistaken, you sent it. I think I have it here and it has like all these different things, like compensation section two. I think we have it. So I think this is good, but it would be nice to have it attached. It should be attached for the public facing so that they can see the dollars, of their dollars being spent. Appreciate that.
Where, where, where do you have that?
Right.
So it appears there must have been a response to an email of a question of a board trustee. So it's probably in your email and you may, because you're new trustees, you may not have that information.
I can forward it to you, but.
Did they, do they have their emails, district emails?
Yes, yes.
So you would have received it, is it in your district emails as new trustees?
We checked.
Not, not, not that particular.
Who did it come from?
It came from Re, uh, did it come from you, Rita? No. It came from Rita, um, and it had the two attachments on it. I can't see if the new trustees were in the blind copy, but I can forward it to them now, but it'll be on the resolution, it'll be attached to the resolution either way. I'll, I'll share it now.
And this is a not-to-exceed contract?
No, it just gives a split of the money, the, it's of the compensation structure, that's what it is. But at least it has dollars and cents so that we can understand and the public can understand what we should be paying and for what services we're gonna receive.
Can I, can I, may I? If you don't have enough information and you have not been able to review the information, you have to feel comfortable with your vote, right? So, that's all I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
You abstain?
Abstain.
Trustee McDonough?
I voted aye.
Trustee Mitchell?
I voted aye. Well, that's only because I have a chart.
Okay. Trustee Middleton?
I voted aye.
Okay. Trustee White?
Aye.
And trustee Kelly? Is there, no. All right, this, this motion fails.
Dr. Strickland, you have a comment?
Yes, so um, this is a prime example of uh, a situation where we're gonna have to develop a cadence on how it is that information is asked for and being shared. So please know that, you know, this is something that I really want to work with the board on because the information was asked, um, the tabs were provided, uh, and I believe, you know, the diligence was done, and I assume everyone does their diligence. But we want to be sure that we keep the, the, the work of the district continuously moving. However, uh, when one asks a question, we probably need to develop a mechanism in which the information is available to all the board members so that we don't get in these predicaments. Uh, I am worried when, when we vote things down, that work can't continue. So I do want you to just be aware that that's something that I will actually um, be discussing uh, at a later time.
Can I just say something to that?
Absolutely.
I think it's very important, what you're saying is important because one thing, when I'm reading the tabs and other things that I don't know about, it says the board has approved. And if we don't know about it, then I don't know how it is that we're approving something that we have not voted on that we don't know about. So we get here and you're right, and we ask all these questions. So that, that, that's definitely uh, in the days ahead, something we must do.
Generally, the language isn't affirmative, um, but I will say that's, that's gonna be the big purpose of the work session so that when you get the tabs, we're gonna actually review them. You don't see a contract. We will then say, we're gonna make sure or ensure that you have that information so that when we come to the board business meeting, we are just simply, uh, you are all aware and we can go ahead and vote um, on the tabs that are before you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion for 8.9? Appoint EFPR Group CPAs PLLC as external auditor requests for a proposal. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.10. Authorize Sineka Consultant Inc. for administrative and financial consultation services in connection with the Affordable Care Act for the 25-26 fiscal year.
Second question. We're paying them, right? They're gonna be paid for their services?
Questions, concerns?
I'm sorry. So um, if, we don't have, there's nothing attached here? It just says, the firm, I'm sorry. I don't see an attachment, an, oh, I see, it's, it's cost to not C10-5. I don't see an attachment, and I, oh, I see, it's, it's cost 10105. Okay, thank you. Calling that out, that it's right there, shown in the resolution, which is public-facing, they can see the dollars, the cap. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.11, authorization for the approval of PMA Management Corp.?
So wait, there's an amendment on the floor? In the description, it reads February 1st.
I'm, I'm sorry. Who, can I have a motion? Okay, that was you. Okay. Okay.
In the description, it reads February 1st, it should read July 1st. Rita, did you change that on me?
It says July 1st.
Yeah, we changed it. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.12, authorization to pay other school districts for health and related services for the 25, 26 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
There, there's an amendment on the floor. I was waiting for the green light.
Okay.
So this one should say in the description, she, she changed it again. Very good, Rita.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.13, authorization to renew the agreement with Brown &amp; Brown to serve as a retail agent for insurance coverage for the 25, 26 school year? Can I have a... Second. Questions, concerns? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.14, authorization for replacement of coverage for the 25, 26 fiscal year with Affleck New York to provide extended health coverage?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.15, authorization to appoint Ori Karen and Sutcliffe as bond counsel during the 25, 26 fiscal year? Can I have a second? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing number 650824?
Question, Rita, can we do...
Can I have a motion? Oh, wait.
Can we do 9.1 to 9.8 as a consensus? It's, they're all...
No, these have to be...
Individual? Okay.
So can I have a, can I have a motion, please?
Can, afterwards, we will explain.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Okay. Second, please.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a mo...
I just want to explain to our trustee that in a consent agenda, you can lump them all together, but this is not a consent agenda. If we had had a work session, we would have been able to provide a consent agenda, and we would have been able to vote on them all at the same time.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I have a motion for 9.2, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650826? Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.3, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650827? Motion? Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.4, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650828? Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.5, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650829?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.6, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650830? Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.7, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650831? Motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.8, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650832? Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.9, approval of settlement agreement and release for hearing 650833?
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion, please, for 10.1, to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We are in executive session.
I'd like to thank each and everyone for coming out and for sharing with us tonight. We will be adjourning in executive session, so we will not be returning to the public. So thank you very much, and have a great holiday weekend.